Or. Statement of anchor location. Which is pursuant to Utah Code annotated fifty-two dash four dash two zero seven for. The Chair of the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission hereby determines that conducting any meeting of the Planning Commission. Within thirty days after December thirty first, twenty twenty at. At an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present. At the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to. The covid nineteen coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic. I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency. Constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety. Of those who may be present at the location. And by the way, I don't know Shane, if you had part in updating that language, but it's a little easier to get through. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a. It's a necessary, but. Disliked part of public meetings for the duration of the pandemic. So I tried to, I tried to do it shorter. I hope it worked.
It did unless, yeah, so less wordy. For me to read every time and everybody else who has to do it someday will be able to do these again in person. I'm confident. It may not be all of us, though. Who knows how long this is going on? Anyway, welcome. Thanks for joining us tonight. First, first item of business, I guess, is and I often. It's always on our agenda and I often don't ask, but does anyone have any, any conflicts to disclose? Hearing none. Our agenda tonight, then we have our public comment period and we'll go into our business items, which we have one of this evening. And that's a. Public hearing on a possible bed and breakfast. Rezone or excuse me, not a reason, a conditional use in the residential office zone. And we have meeting minutes to review and approve. A review of our procedures for those that are present tonight with us is that we will have typically on any of our business items will have a staff presentation. And we'll have the applicant present their. Their application will open the public hearing, which would be for comments directly related to that application. We'll close the public hearing if that's appropriate and move on to deliberation among the planning commissioners and any motion should that be appropriate. So it's a review of how we do this. Please stick with us. We try and stick to our procedures here. And first thing, next thing on our agenda is our general public comment. This is a public comment time for anyone who's joining us tonight, who has. Something to comment on that is not specifically on our agenda. It's an open public comment period. So we'll go ahead and open that. Not sure we have anybody else with us. Heather, you probably can see. The applicant.
Oh, I do see one. We have a Pat Dennis. I'll add Pat right now.
Welcome, Pat. Go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, thank you. Pat Dennis, Cottonwood Heights, up on Top of the World Drive. I try to sit in as often as possible on the business planning and then this meeting or vice versa, the working meeting. Couple of things came to mind when I was listening in. In my work, I work kind of recently closely with the Midvale Planning Committee folks, city planners there and. I am. Pleased and surprised at their strength to get the developers to do exactly what they want them to do. And the planning that they're doing around view seventy-eight is incredible. I mean, walking and pickleball and everything, you know, the planner has to put all this stuff in the developer has to put all this stuff in. And it's going to be an amazing city. If you know the people over there, chat with them suggestion. The other thing work wise, I heard that the Airbnb. Now the bed and breakfast code seems to need updating. Yet this was the second one that's been presented and you know, in my work life, we have to look at. Our. Governance documents on a two-year rotating basis. So that we do keep up to date and when the. Planning Commission rules and procedures old logo, it sounds like there's no schedule. To update the codes or the provisions. So that everybody has a fair chance of doing things right and not investing to be shot down. Lastly, the comment about the. Area above top of the world drive. As it stands now. We're, we have a fancy errors permit. We have show dogs worth. Thousands and thousands of dollars and we have to keep bark collars on them because. People have their dogs up there off leash. They jump on our fence. They bite through our fence. And you know, we're the ones suffering. If there is a plan for a door dog park up there, it's got to be fenced. Not everybody has fences. And people's cats are run off and other animals out of their backyard because of off leash dogs right now. Along with the poop and everything else that you find everywhere. But what I noticed mostly in. The comments was that everybody wants a little bit of dog park in their local park. Not just one designated dog park. And you can fence off an area and have it for big and little dogs and in every park. You know, they're being used more often during covid. But normally they're not because it's not a place the neighbors can go and run their dogs off leash in their local community. Thanks for letting me speak my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Do we have anyone else, Mike?
No.
Okay, thanks, Pat. You know, we appreciate you joining us. It's a. It's a little different being online and. It's nice to have you here with us. Without any other, anybody else there for general public comment, we'll go ahead and close the general public comment.
Can I ask a quick question? It looks like we have two Jessica Chapels here. One video and then one that's muted. Is that just a duplicate or is someone signed in?
It might be her audio. Jessica, are you calling through your phone?
Yeah, I have some trouble with my.
Okay. Okay, perfect. No problem. Just wanted to make sure.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. That's probably how we get those. What do they call it? Zoom bombing?
Yeah, it's happened before.
Okay, let's see where were we? Okay, so our next, our business item, which is Project CUP. Dash twenty dash zero one six. This is a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a request from Thurmond. Dressin, I hope I said that appropriately, the right way. On behalf of Joe Camiglio. For conditional use approval of a bed and breakfast at sixty-six thirty-two South Highland Drive. In the residential office zone. We'll go ahead and turn it over to staff Sam for a presentation.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and share this presentation. Okay, I want to check at this point. Is everybody seeing the presentation? Okay, thank you. Awesome. So this application is a conditional use application for a bed and breakfast as Commissioner Chair Koots mentioned. It's located at sixty-six thirty-two South Highland Drive and we see it highlighted here with this red box as a bit of context. Staff is recommending approval of this application with an added condition that I will address subsequently. As a bit of ordinance review, bed and breakfast are allowed in the underlying residential office zone. They have a unique definition that states. They are defined as a dwelling occupied as a permanent residence by an owner or renter, which serves breakfast and provides or offers sleeping accommodations. If we compare this definition with what we have received from the applicant in the application and narrative. We see that the applicant has confirmed a permanent resident will reside in the home and will sign a yearly contract. We have recommended a condition of approval that the applicant demonstrate this occupancy annually when they renew their required business license. The applicant has also confirmed the resident will prepare and serve the required breakfast to the guests. And the provided floor plan does indicate multiple bedroom areas satisfying the sleeping accommodations requirement of the definition. Looking a little bit at the project site, the applicant is not proposing any expansion to the building or alteration of the site. The proposed bed and breakfast would be contained within the existing building, the existing home located here. If alterations are proposed down the road, we would require the proper permits and review. I do want to note that due to the change of use. There are several building code upgrades which will need to be made. A building permit and inspections will be required to satisfy this requirement. But these code upgrades won't affect the building footprint. In terms of parking, there is existing off-street parking available on the north side of the property. The applicant has prepared this parking map that we see here. It shows. Parking for the permanent resident kind of in the yellow color and then. Parking for the bed and breakfast guest in the red. Based on the parking standards that the city has adopted. This is sufficient parking for this, this proposed use. With two spaces for the resident and three for the guest. In terms of public comment. Up to this point, staff has received one phone call comment and two written comments. And these written comments have been forwarded to the commission, but I wanted to kind of go through some of the nature of the concerns that were voiced. And the first concern that was brought up was kind of inquiring about the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast. The important kind of distinguishing factor here is that. A short-term rental doesn't require any onsite management, but a bed and breakfast, as we saw in the definition. Requires that a permanent resident live at the property. So again, staff has recommended a condition of approval. That the applicant continually demonstrate evidence of this permanent resident when they go to renew their business license. The second nature of concern that was brought up related to the building footprint. Several folks were wondering whether a new building was going to be constructed or significant changes would be made. No changes have been proposed at this time. The only anticipated changes that staff is aware of are those. Those required building code upgrades that won't affect the building size or height. And then finally, there were some concerns brought up about code enforcement and I'm actually going to just move forward one slide to kind of discuss those. There were some concerns about some shipping containers that were located at the project address and then also. Potential use of this. Property as a short-term rental. In terms of code enforcement, any open code enforcement issues. Must be resolved before staff will issue the required business license that's needed to operate. If violations happen after this is issued, issued, assuming if it is approved. These violations will be addressed through subsequent code enforcement efforts. I don't know if this is the point that the planning commission would like to take additional public comment or it can continue. I'll defer to the commission on that.
Thank you, Sam. I think we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Here's what I found.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Good. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, yeah, thanks for taking, taking my application here. I'm glad we got these things. I was able to listen in on the last call and some of these things came up. As far as the container situation. That was a semi. Anyways, we have a property up in Garden City, which I think I explained before that we are waiting to take occupancy. It should have been, you know, five months ago, but just with covid and the winter season. We've been unable to grab that yet. We're hoping that happens this week and we'll get those gone within the next couple of weeks. And I assume that I wouldn't be able to get the license until. Those were for sure. Out of the way there. And then as Sam's Samantha has already said with everything else. Yeah, I mean, that's what we plan on doing is having a. Person kind of living in the basement with a. Lease and part of their agreement to live there would be to, you know, provide breakfast in the mornings and. Kind of be an onsite property manager for us.
How many tenants do you anticipate on a given day?
So we'll have up to three bedrooms. So it'd be six people max. And to be honest, I mean, I'm assuming to have roughly fifty percent occupancy. You know, depending on season, everything else like that. So my guess would be, you know, if you average it out, maybe three a day.
Who is the current resident?
So it's my nephew, I call him, but Hunter. And him and his wife are newlyweds and they live down there in the basement.
And you currently have it advertised, right?
I do not currently have it advertised, so I know that. Screenshots, Samantha. It's actually funny. That is my Cottonwood Heights place. So I live in Cottonwood Heights as well. I live over in the Whitmore Estates behind the Whitmore Library. And I had thrown that on VRBO as a six-month lease. So I just threw it on there to grab some more traffic and somebody booked it through VRBO, but I did a six-month on that. I'm pretty sure six-month is okay.
That rental was before any approval?
So that was. So that rental, yes, is before any approval, but it's a six-month rental, which is not like a short-term rental. But I did list it on VRBO. That makes sense. So VRBO is not necessarily just for short-term. Rentals. You could do six months, year, whatever. On there. And it's my basement for not actually even this property is my basement in. Cottonwood Heights up the street.
I was muted. Sorry about that. Any other questions for the applicant commissioners? While they're thinking. I have one. So it says you, this application is on behalf of Joe Coco Miglio. I hope I said that right.
Close enough. He won't take offense.
Thank you. I'm glad. So what, what is the relationship there? Is he the property owner or are you the property?
He's the property owner. Yeah, I'm a longtime friend of mine.
And have you, have you looked into? Any health department requirements for operating a bed and breakfast?
You know, I have it and I figured that was going to be like Samantha said, in the next steps. You know, with covid right now, that was definitely, you know, a big concern of ours. We were planning on maybe doing single-serve options that were just kind of. Grab and go. But yeah, that's what I figured. It was this process first and then whatever we need to do with the health department, we were happy to make sure we. Get along there. And I know you had the question of asking if there was a second kitchen in the basement. There is a second full kitchen in the basement, dishwasher, fridge, stove. Everything there.
Thank you. Okay, well, if there are any other direct questions from the commission, we'll thank you for being here and for your time and then we will go ahead and go into our. Planning Commission discussion.
Thanks.
Before we do that, I'd like to have another question. Is there a reason why you didn't check all these boxes and. Get all these issues resolved before you came to the commission with this application?
I apologize. What issues are we talking about?
Well, my understanding is that those shipping containers were asked to be removed in October.
Yeah, so that's something that I didn't know was a conditional like for this particular thing. And it sounds like it maybe wasn't maybe for get my business license or get the final approval it is. And it's something I've been. Working on honestly, because I, I know that. So it's something I've been working on. The guy I talked to in October. He said, just get it done. He didn't give me a timeframe or anything along those lines. I don't mean to throw him under the bus, but. It is something we, we have been working on, but I. I didn't want to just move it temporarily somewhere else and actually didn't have anywhere else temporarily to move it. So I was waiting until we, we closed on our place in Garden City.
So what do you do when you get more than three cars?
So if you look at the map. So you can. There, because I think Mike was kind enough to measure that out for us. And at the forty-five feet, you could fit five cars wide. If you look where the resident parking is. It's actually, so we have two containers there that are twenty feet by twenty feet. So you could actually, I mean, you could fit probably twelve cars on that, that space there. We're not going to, you know, you know, line it up for twelve cars. But the resident, I was planning on parking on the spar wall that they could park two there. And then you could actually park two next to there. So I mean, you could fit very easily seven cars there without any. Craziness going on. And if it was two people that showed up, you know, for one bedroom, I could ask them to park in that spot, you know, in front and back of each other.
Thank you. We'll let you know if we have any, any other questions as we have our discussion.
Thanks.
All right, commissioners, so. Let's restate what we're being asked for here. It's a conditional use. For a bed and breakfast on this property in the residential office zone. You know, as stated, there are. A couple of trying to get my screen back here. Conditions that have been suggested by staff. As well as some things that have come up in our discussion related to. Building code updates, resolution of a current code enforcement situation, which would. Also played a important. Having enough parking available. And then I'd like to add clarification of any oversight by the health department for this use. And if anyone has it up in front of them, the conditions specifically from the city.
Sure, I have the, are you guys seeing the staff recommendation and model motion?
Oh, good. Thanks for bringing that up. Sorry, I went to my.
Yeah. Oh, no worries. I do have that there. And I'm not sure if you still wanted to open the public hearing and take comment before moving forward with a motion. But once you are ready for the motion, I, I do have this one here that includes the one recommended condition of approval. And then, of course, if you have others you want to add.
Perfect. Thanks, Sam. No, I think I just wanted to get it out on the table. What's, what we're being asked here.
Sure.
Before we, we finish our discussion. And yes, thank you. We do need to have a public. Public comment. So commissioners, any other discussion before we go to public comment?
I always get concerned when we're asked to. Approve something in advance and then we'll just wait and see that the ordinance enforcement people are going to take care of it. And. I guess I'm less than trusting on those.
I think I'm with Bob on this one and I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'd love to see some good faith by the. By the developer and the, at the very least, if, if there was. A request that these be removed just in deference to the neighbors and our constituency, the people that live in that neighborhood, maybe. Maybe rather than having the car go before the horse, we do this in a stepwise fashion that. He shows good faith by getting those shipping containers and we revisit the, the motion at that time. I don't know if that would be in order or not.
Commissioner Mills, this is Mike. I think we were supportive of that. I don't necessarily like the rationale that we're waiting to move into a place in another city. So we're using this property illegally to store something. So, so we would be supportive of that.
Would that require a motion, Mike, to, to table this? Because we don't, we don't have a motion at this point. We're just having discussion, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, whatever the commission decides tonight, approval, denial or continuance requires a motion to that effect.
I think that if you're going to continue, continue it to a date certain.
Thank you, Shane. Well, let's, thank you, Commissioner Wild, Commissioner Mills. It's a good discussion point. If, if, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing for this particular item. If we have anyone who's joined us who would like to comment. From the public.
We have two. The first to raise their hand was Lisa Mado Russo. I will add Lisa now.
She should. Go ahead when you're ready.
And thank you very much. I am curious about signage and what that looks like for our neighborhood.
Thanks, Lisa. I think we could probably address this at least generally. It's in the residential office zone, so it would be. Code-wise would have to meet those signage requirements. Mike, maybe you can refer her more specifically or Sam or Andy.
Sam, Sam's got those details, I know.
Yeah, so in the residential office zone, that's one where signage requires Architectural Review Commission and Planning Commission. Approval as well as a building permit and there are certain standards for sizing. I believe. Off the top of my head, the wall signs are limited to, I think, six square feet. There's no signage proposed as part of this application. If there were signage down the road proposed, we'd go through that. Process with the ARC and the commission.
Can I, can you hear me?
Yeah, Lisa, you still have, by the way, I didn't, I didn't say this before you started. Typically in our public comment, we give three minutes and allow you to comment. If we have an answer, we would. We'd be happy to answer it, but it's not really intended to. To be kind of a back and forth Q and A, but we do want to hear your concerns.
Okay, I was just curious if, because you said down the road. Would another meeting like this take place or it would just happen without any public?
Sure, I might answer that if, if that's all right. That type of application would require another meeting. In. Our city, we take public comment on conditional use permits, so it would be a similar process where. We would hold a meeting with the Architectural Review Commission to look at signage and then we would hold a meeting with the Planning Commission to look at signage and it would be. A similar. Process to what you're experiencing tonight.
Thank you.
And Lisa, at any point in time, you are welcome to call city staff, planning staff, and they're happy to share you with you. All of that information and details and point you directly to the language and, and you know, kind of what can happen. Thanks for joining us.
We also have, it just says Liz N, so I will add Liz to the meeting now.
Thanks. Go ahead, Liz, when you're ready.
Okay, I actually sent an email in. Am I allowed to comment?
Sure, you're here. You've joined us.
So I thought it was interesting. He said that his nephew Hunter was going to live there as the permanent resident because. He actually lived there and it was my understanding that he asked them to move. So they have not been there and I thought I just would like to address that. Also, he said it was a six-month rental, but we see different cars up there every couple of days. So I'm. Just questioning the validity of the comment that he had for a six-month rental. Which is why I appreciate if you would table it because I feel like. Things are not consistent in what he says. That's all.
Can I address just the six-month component? Would that be acceptable, Commissioner Chair?
You're, yes, go ahead, Sam.
So I believe the six-month rental period was referring to a different property. And I don't have information on the first part of the question about the permanent resident and the history there, but I. I think the six months was actually referring to a separate property, not the subject property for this application.
Where is the other property?
I don't have that information.
He told us it was behind, he's near Whitmore Library. But I think, I think Sam's got the right point, which is it's not this property, but I think what the point that we're hearing from. Liz, who I'm assuming is a neighbor, is that. There's maybe a little bit of a lack of trust. Moving forward and this, this came out in some of our discussion as far as just code compliance issues that are, that are existing. That's sort of what I'm hearing here, but I'm getting ahead of myself. Mike, do we have any other public comment?
Yes, we have Pat Dennis. Pat should be on now.
Okay, go ahead, Pat, when you're ready.
I just, it's nervous talking to you folks a little bit, but I just wanted to say thank you for all your service. I forgot to add that on my last comments. My father was a commissioner back east and it's, it's work with. Not much pay, if any, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. We'll take your comment like that anytime.
That's all the people in the meeting tonight, so I don't think we have any more comments.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I will go ahead and close the public comment. For this item. So commissioners. We have options that we discussed before we opened the public comment period here and some of the issues were discussed. Anyone prepared to make a motion or continue the discussion?
I move that we table Project CUP dash twenty dash oh one six to our meeting in April.
April? That's, that's three months out. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, I'd take a friendly amendment if there needs to be an adjustment to that.
That would be April seventh, according to my calendar, if I'm looking at the right date, twenty twenty-one. We have a motion, discussion to the motion. We have a motion, discussion to the motion. I guess I would question why April. Why go so far out, Dan?
I'm anxious to see if we can get some goodwill on behalf of the applicant. I think that the shipping containers, as Bob pointed out, is just one issue. The response we're getting from the adjacent residents, let's, let's give him a chance to legitimately get his ducks in a row. I share the concern that Mike expressed it, if we're held hostage by what's happening in another city. I just, I think in a month and maybe even in two months, we may hear another dog ate my homework excuse. And I, I think we give the guy the benefit of the doubt, and I think April gives him a reasonable window to do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion to the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, if you're ready, we will go ahead and take a vote on the motion. Give me a minute. I'm not actually seeing everybody all at once on my screen.
You can stop sharing too, if that helps.
Okay, thanks. I'm not navigating as well tonight as usual. Let's see. Commissioner Chapel.
I am for the motion.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Yes.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Commissioner Mills, yes.
And Commissioner Koots, yes. Motion passes and that item is tabled until April. And hopefully that gives you a chance to clear up some of your code issues and maybe answer some of the questions that have come up regarding code resolution, building code updates and, and any kind of other health department or other items that'll, that you'll face as a bed and breakfast owner, as well as creating some goodwill in the neighborhood. Thank you. I think we look forward to having another bed and breakfast as long as it's done well and is a, in addition to what's happening in Cottonwood Heights. Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda. We had, we have planning commission meeting minutes for December 2nd, 2020. I don't know if everyone received those and had a chance to review them. I did, and I did. I have to say, I don't know if anyone agrees with me. If you had a chance to read them, the work meeting, I don't know if it was the bad audio recording or if we were just being kind of obtuse, but it really seemed like there was a lot of, a lot of editing that needed to happen on that one. When I moved to the business meeting, it seemed fine and relevant, and I didn't notice anything on that that was not as I recall it. So I, those are my comments on it.
Move, we accept the minutes?
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yay.
Hi.
And I'll oppose based on my comments. I think the work session needs to be edited pretty heavily. Even the name of the developer was wrong. Okay, so I'm not sure if those pass or not with three, three and one. I don't know how that works with our diminished numbers here tonight, but are we four?
Well, we have five, so.
Oh, good. Okay.
Four. I think we have four.
You're done. And our next meeting is scheduled for January. Oh, no, we're into February, correct?
No, we have two in January, so January 20th.
January 20th, okay.
I have one request. If staff could find out what the health department requirements are for bed and breakfast before April, I would appreciate that.
I've got a question. I can't remember who brought it up earlier, but they're saying the, I think it was Jesse that said the bed and breakfast up on 30th East isn't serving breakfast. Is there some way we can, I mean, enforce?
He said they weren't advertising it. I don't know that we know the answer to that, but yeah.
Staff can look into code enforcement options for that concern. As far as the health department request from Commissioner Wild, I will follow up with the applicant on some of the notes I've taken throughout this meeting. And I'm sure we can kind of work through some of those health department questions of what that looks like down the road.
And from an enforcement standpoint, Sam, even with the, I know we've, we've gone round and round. I know the city has as well with the short-term rentals. I know that the penalties in certain municipalities are upwards of $1,000 for a violation of even advertising a short-term rental in a place where there should not be a short-term rental. And if there, if there are opportunities, I just hate to see us waiting until after the fact. I just second Bob's concern earlier that it's really hard to do this in hindsight. If there are ways that we can beef, beef up, I just want our enforcement people to have whatever teeth they need. And I don't know if that originates from us and then goes to the city council or however that works, Mike. I just love to just beef up both separating out what Jesse pointed out, the difference between, you know, a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast. And then if it's, if somebody's violating it, that our enforcement people can do something that significantly.
I think that staff can take a look at our code and our definitions if we're so directed and look at making an update to be a little bit more holistic with where we're at with more short-term rental platforms. As far as the enforcement opportunities, that's the conversation I'm happy to have with our code enforcement and find out kind of what their options look like. I may be incorrect on this point, but I believe there are certain state-level requirements that kind of standardize what you can use in enforcing short-term rentals. So that is a conversation I'd want to look into down the road.
Yeah, so code enforcement's out of the police department. It all originates there and is managed and administered by the police department. So what we can do is I can share the commission's recommendations with the city manager and share it in our monthly code enforcement coordination meeting and let them, you know, do what they will with that. But they use, they use a citation process in code enforcement for most cases.
And I know in other municipalities in the states, Sam, that there are, there are heavy fines for violations that, so I think we can do it in a way that, I appreciate you passing that on, Mike, to the side.
Well.
I'm looking to.
Yeah, my comments just if we say, yes, you can do this with these stipulations, and then if they're not doing them, you know, that gets out to others saying, oh, we can ask for bed and breakfast and do, you know, what we want. So I just think if we give them stipulations and let them, you know, you have to have someone on site, you need to have breakfast. If they're not doing that, then we need to enforce it.
There are certainly some things that will come up and we have to enforce after the fact, and that can be a frustrating process. But I'm happy to work with the applicant on hopefully resolving some of these things upfront.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for the discussion. Thanks for the information to Mike and Sam.
I can, I can just say that a few years ago, the Utah Legislature limited cities' ability to cite short-term rental operators for advertising, I think, whether or not the short-term rental is legal. So I've sent that bill to staff and they'll, they'll take that into consideration in their analysis.
Thanks for the information. Yeah, it's a good discussion. I think we all have this kind of heartburn when this, when conditional use comes before us and we know that there may be potential issues that are going to create problems down the road for both city staff to mitigate and neighbors and then the owner in the end. So thanks. Okay, any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we dismiss. Or adjourn, I'm sorry, that we adjourn.
Same thing. Good job. Thanks, Doug. Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Chapel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Happy New Year, everyone. Nice to see your faces.
Happy New Year.